Wilson Douglas, the Director of the Development Services Department. And to start off your 5:30 session this evening, I have the great honor of introducing Chris Shires with Confluence, who has worked on the South of Grey's Lake Master Plan. I think all of you may have been at the session in July where we reviewed the planning work that was underway at that point. So this is the culmination of that effort. And just to remind you, this is a small section of a lar- a small but mighty, I would say, section of a larger master plan that we did in conjunction with our engineering department over the course of the last 15, 18 months. Where we looked at, excuse me, I'm going to pull my mask down while speaking here. Where we looked at a larger planning effort for infrastructure in the southwest section of the city. And oftentimes, as we do these small area master plans, it's because of mounting development pressure. While that's somewhat the case here, really more so, it was to inform this larger master planning, infrastructure master planning effort. So that we understood how, as infrastructure makes its way into the downtown area, just how the culmination of that infrastructure would work and interface with existing infrastructure in the downtown area. So with that, I am going to turn the mic over to Chris for the full presentation of the master plan.
Well, good evening again. I'm Christopher Shires and with Confluence here in our Des Moines office. Also have with us tonight Abby Hebert, who's going to run through part of the presentation as well. What we want to do is just present a reminder of the project, what we're trying to accomplish and our schedule. Then we want to walk through all the public input, stakeholder feedback we received. And then finally, I'm going to present the master plan concept as well as an animated video. Right. So that's the best part. So as people walk in, they're going to see at the ending, the great fly-through video. So as Erin talked about, this is a subset of the larger southwest infrastructure planning study, the South of Grey's Lake Master Plan. And so here's the boundary of that study on the southwest side of the Des Moines metro, kind of hugging around the airport territory, out on Park Avenue, over to 63rd, and then into the Thomas Beck area. But for this master plan analysis and study, it's specifically, and on this map, north is up, Fluor Drive is on the west, Grey's Lake Park is on the north, and then we go all the way over to southwest 7th, and then just touching into the neighborhood south of Thomas Beck Road. The purpose of this plan was to get ahead of the development curve. We do see this as that next logical development area at some point in the future. There will be development and redevelopment pressure in this area, as we're already witnessing. So the city wants to get ahead of understanding the infrastructure needs for this area specifically, and to get an idea of maybe how best it could be redeveloped. Again, this is a plan for the future, to help get the property owners, area stakeholders excited about it. It's not meant to be heavy-handed and to force anything. We look at this master planning process as a partnership. So anything that will happen will be in partnership with the property owners, not something that the city is separately undertaking. Process was a little more than a year long, and now we're at the end of that process, going through the final adoption step. And so we had an advisory committee that helped steer the process. We met with them five times. We had a series of stakeholder interviews with property owners, developers, other interested parties in the area. We had a public workshop, although that one had to be virtual because we were smack dab in the middle of COVID. But we did have an interactive website that we also received some great feedback. And then we were able to do our joint meeting with you and the Urban Design Review Board back in July, and then a really well-attended public open house to get that last bit of information and feedback on our master planning comments. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Abby, who's going to run through what we heard from the community.
Good evening, everybody. So as Chris said, I just wanted to come up here and explain some of the public input that we received, both in person and from the website. So the in-person portion was held July 28th at the Fred Maytag Scout Center. It was about, we had about 90 to 100 attendees come out for it, which was really encouraging to us to see such positive feedback and turnout. At the event, we had three different sets of boards for the attendees to see. So the existing conditions of the site, just to really make or get them acquainted with what the current land uses are and what's happening on the site. Some precedent imagery to really kind of set the scene for what we had envisioned within the master plan. And then we proposed three different design scenarios for each of them, at a different level of density, a different level of retention of some of the buildings there today, and then just kind of a conglomerate of each of those scenarios. So we encouraged the attendees to really interact with the boards, leave comments on them to tell us what they liked, what they didn't like. And so from that, we kind of noted some key points. They would really like to see the retention of Confluence Brewery, and many of them really favored the boardwalk and double woo-nurf features within the scenarios number two and three. They really preferred mixed-use options over having purely dedicated residential buildings. They really didn't feel that low-density, single-family residential was prefer- or prime for this location. They did see a little more density happening here. They would like to see a grocery option within this to serve the local neighborhood and the residents that would potentially live here. They also said that a lot of people would pay a lot of money to live here just because of its proximity to Grey's Lake and downtown, and then also the proposed amenities within the area. They would like to see an increase in the transportation opportunities here with more bus stops to connect to downtown and the airport. But many did support and encourage the pedestrian and, oh, pedestrian and walkability of the area. So each attendant got a comment card to really provide some individual and detailed feedback to each of the scenarios, and a couple ideas of the site features. So they had the opportunity to rank potential site features on a scale of 1 to 10, provide feedback for each of the three concepts, and then rank the three concepts in the end, and then provide some general feedback to really just kind of give an overarching summary of it all. So from those potential site features, we had public space, retail, pedestrian-focused streets, mixed-use trail connections, public art, boardwalk, active recreation services, residential restaurants, and then light industrial and flex spaces. So then we went through and did some average rankings, and then some final rankings of the top three site features that were preferred. And so number one you'll see is trail connections, number two is the pedestrian-focused streets, and then number three is boardwalk. So again, you see that highlight feature of really bringing it down to the pedestrian focus within the development, and really encouraging that throughout all of the scenarios. Then again, they had the opportunity to rank the three scenarios that we called Business Park Neighborhood is scenario one, Main Street Neighborhood is scenario two, and then Urban Green Neighborhood is scenario three. The highest ranking one out of all of that was the Urban Green Neighborhood. So from the common three, from the comment cards, we provided some general themes from each of the feedback and the wants and desires that we heard. Again, they really just reiterated the desire for walkability and pedestrian focus within this area, keeping the Confluence Brewery there. It's a local and regional hub for everybody, both bikers and pedestrians. They didn't want to see extreme density, but they would prefer something greater than single-family residential, so something in between that mix there for you. They would like to see some green space in the area with less car focus, really bringing it back to the pedestrian and bicyclist. And then they'd like to see more mixed-use community space, and then the double woo-nurf and the boardwalk. So as Chris mentioned, we did have this project going during COVID. So in order to kind of accommodate that and make sure that everything was digitalized and accommodated that feature, we had an interactive website that provided a lot of feedback and interaction there. So of that, we had different mapping scenarios for each of the three scenarios listed on the website, as well as a general, just land use one for general comment. So the highlights from this was, again, a diversity in housing typologies that are neither single-family developments nor high-rise apartments, so more of those townhomes and row houses and lower density, or lower story apartment buildings. Many wanted to see the retention of Confluence Brewery, but not the other older buildings in the area. They felt that those could be renovated and are reimagined in a different way. They also would like to see connections to and from Lincoln High School and McCray Park, seeing opportunities for the pedestrian in there to really highlight shortened connections and just bring that back to them. And then there should also be an environmental and sustainable focus that embraces South of Grey's Lake to the north. There's a, many Des Moines people or residents hold Grey's Lake close to their heart, and so they really just want to keep that as a precious and valuable feature. Then they would also like to see the double woo-nurf and boardwalk happen, just really creating that walkable and develop, walkable and bikeable development. And then lastly, really putting a focus on the gathering spaces that would allow for social events and programming opportunities. So putting all these, putting all the input and summary feedback back together, you would see that from scenario three, there were, it was the most preferred concept. Of the features that were there, they really, really preferred the double woo-nurf that was in there. They would really like to link back the neighborhood to natural environment and recreational amenities, really connecting it to South of Grey's Lake, not having it be a standalone feature. Preferred that they would, that there's pedestrian-oriented development. They would really like to see increased connections crossing to the river for pedestrians and bicyclists. Again, they really like that Conference, Confluence Brewery, so they want to make sure that stays there. And then they would like to preserve as much open and gathering space, in-place space as possible with mid-intensity and density as the most desirable building use. So then I'll pass it back over to Chris for the master plan.
Abby, thank you very much. And just to be clear, we're not trying to make an advertisement for Confluence Brewery. We do not have any kind of financial connection with them at all. They're just beloved by the neighborhood, so there you go. So with all that input, we came back with a refined master plan, where we looked at land uses, as well as concepts for building placement, road alignments, open spaces, stormwater management, retention ponds and the like, and buildings that possibly can be preserved in the short and long term. Again, I just want to reiterate, because we were very careful through the process meeting with our stakeholders, this is not to tell a property owner, you have to knock down your building, do what we say. This is a guide to help get people excited for the future and how this area can develop out over time. Anything that would happen here would be in partnership with the property owners, building owners, and the city. So let's start on the left-hand side of the screen with north is up. You have Fluor Drive on the left side. So we show, you know, we can preserve that Iowa Finance Authority building. I know they're going through a master planning process or will be. But then tucked around it, we have opportunities for additional multifamily residential to the north and to its east, with a large stormwater retention pond right in the middle. Suppose I can circle some of this with the mouse, or maybe I can't. But as you'll notice, that Grey's Lake Park boundary is immediately to the north, and as a part of the southwest infrastructure study, we have worked on a concept for a stormwater treatment facility in the former Wetland area with additional bike trail locations. And so all the development is, of course, staying on the private property outside the lake, the park site, but really these opportunities to have some nice interaction. In the middle of the property, those buildings in blue, in purple, are a mixed-use type concept, so first-floor retail, upper floors, office and residential, served by kind of focusing that parking internally with that park-once mindset. You come to the site, you park your car, then you circulate with the sidewalks and trails. And we had kind of that backbone of the road network through there is what we call a double woo-nurf. And so we're using a fancy term for a street that's designed more for the biker and the pedestrian than the car, although a car can run through it. In this case, it's extra wide, allowing greater public gathering space kind of in the middle of the whole thing. To help buffer and transition our neighbors to the south of Thomas Beck, we do show the concept in yellow of some townhomes, row house-type development, and preserving that slope and those heirloom oak trees on that hillside as a way to kind of buffer and keep the area looking green. On the transportation planning side, there is that roundabout concept about kind of halfway between the master planning area as a way to calm traffic, as well as manage connections in and out of the property. Both that cul-de-sac location, as well as that first main double drive on Bell Avenue where it transitions from Bell to Thomas Beck, allow some view corridors through this site and into Grey's Lake Park. And then as we continue farther east, we have the Pomerance Industrial Building, where that currently houses on the far east end, the Confluence Brewery site, that maybe that building can be preserved for some undetermined time in the future and just redeveloped with a mix of flexible business, retail-type uses. And then on the south side of Thomas Beck, kind of the continuation of the, what you're already seeing is some development interest in townhome, row house, maybe some multifamily development. And before I jump and show the video, the report to the city also includes some infrastructure recommendations related to general street improvements, some sanitary sewer improvement needs, and some monitoring or some master planning related to water main service in the area, something that we can stay ahead of to manage as development interest continues in the area. Oh, I guess I should show my pictures first before I show the fly-through video. So again, these are, images are included in the report to try to pique that interest and explain what we mean by the different development concepts. So this is showing that very pedestrian-friendly travel paths and roadways, the types of different mixed-use development that may be a little more trail-oriented, some of that medium-density townhome row house development, some of that higher-density development that we can maybe have at the east end of the property, closer to Fluor. Again, some more mixed-use concepts, and that boardwalk concept along Grey's Lake Park that was of great interest. Okay. Now with that, here's kind of that bird's eye view of looking at the site plan concept. Those building colors still mean something, with the brown being typically an apartment, multifamily, the purple being mixed-use, commercial, office, residential, and the yellow being a townhome row house product. And then those white buildings are buildings that are there today, the Iowa Finance Authority, and then the Pomerance Industrial Building. So as we're looking, you see Fluor Drive kind of angling to the north, or to the up and a little bit to the left. That's Fluor. We're generally looking back towards downtown. And I will start the video. And last time I did this, I realized I should have had a little like music with this, so I'm sorry. I could hum, but.
[inaudible]
No. So you can see, we're kind of on top of the Iowa Finance Authority Building there, looking towards. And this is looking up Fluor Avenue, looking north, kind of towards central downtown. The lake is in the background. We did this to kind of show those view corridors trying to be preserved, that the taller stuff is on the far east end, keeping kind of a shorter building profile as we go, I'm sorry, on the west end, shorter building profile as we go east. And that's from on top of the Iowa Finance Authority Building, again, looking north, and then showing some of the view corridors from Bell Avenue, Thomas Beck right there. And again, from that double woo-nurf entrance street right here, into that mixed-use center. And then we're close to that roundabout I discussed, and that's kind of another view corridor from the roadway into Grey's Lake Park. All right. And that is the end of our presentation, but I'm very happy to answer any questions you may have. And I know we're asking for later action to have this adopted as a part of Plan DSM.
Well, it's going to be a huge improvement. But since we talked about Confluence Brewery, is it this little dot there, that white dot? I was just curious on this map.
Let me zoom in here. Let's see here. So on this screen, so we're looking kind of at an angle towards downtown, generally north in the parks to the north end of the development. The first white building kind of at the bottom of the screen, that's Iowa Finance Authority Building. And then as we head east and follow the curve of Thomas Beck around, that next white building on the north side of Thomas Beck, between Thomas Beck and the lake, that is the Pomerance Industrial Building. There's a lot of different tenants in it, and Confluence is basically the eastern third of that building, Confluence Brewery.
So then, is TPI, the current TPI building shown, or is it shown as townhomes now?
Oh, and so now on the south side, here, let me flip back to a more planned view of this. Hold on here. Yeah. So now I'm trying to remember which one is the, are you talking the industrial shipper on the south side of Thomas Beck?
[inaudible]
Yeah. So in this scenario, that's where, can I make them all show up? No, I can, almost. There we go. They're right about here, and so that would be, the concept is, is in discussion and review, is maybe industrial's not the highest and best long-term use? Can we see those sites, you know, when that property owner's ready, redevelop into something else like much-needed residential?
Okay. So if you have a current one, and if you're [inaudible].
Yes, yes.
I have a question, please, about when we had the Urban Design and P&amp;Z meeting back in July, there was a consensus, sort of, as I recall, in terms of one, two, and three of the scenarios. I've forgotten which one was the consensus, and how does that blend in with what you were suggesting in this master plan?
So if memory serves, there was a lie, a real desire to preserve some of the view corridors, and that we're kind of have a bit of a town square, that it's the urban, it might have been the urban green that was the most popular. So what we really focused in on was beefing up this corridor, this roadway, and this is what we're kind of coining the double woo-nurf. It's just a widened boulevard road that has a lot of room for pedestrians and bikes. So we have a lot more distance between building face to building face, so that's a lot more open plaza area. And then like this central spine, which is, you know, all pedestrian, that was our attempt to kind of meet what we thought were some of your interests, as well as the preservation of some lower-density residential along Thomas Beck to help buffer and shield our neighbors to the south. And then we took it a little bit farther and said, hey, as long as we're doing that, why don't we preserve that hillside, that slope there, and some of those heirloom oaks?
Good. Another, this is a comment about the high-rises by Fluor Drive.
Yeah.
I think that's really inspired. It acts as a focus when you come down, okay? And then when you pass that, suddenly you have a lake out in front of you. I think that's quite inspired as a, as a terminus of a view, as it were.
Thank you for that. I would agree with you completely. It's, this is a great opportunity for us to really help dress up and enhance that drive along Fluor. We're coming out of the airport, we're a visitor town, and then we're coming in and seeing some nice development. And then you're right, there's the lake. Same thing from, if you're headed southbound on Fluor. It's a nice, in our mind, a backdrop, and trying to split the two different interests we heard, a little bit of concern with density, and then a desire, hey, let's build a, you know, a nice urban focus area. We need housing, you know, where's that next area in Des Moines as we continue to build and grow?
Christopher, thank you for your presentation. I have a question about this, the parking on the northeast side. Currently, there's a parking area right next to the park, which I can tell you about my own experience, because I live in this area, it's always empty. So I do see that some of this, especially for the existing industrial building, you're replacing some of that current parking with some buildings, some additional green space. But what was the need for this specific area? Because there seems to be quite a, proposed for parking, a large area for that.
And you're talking this area here that I'm circling?
Yep.
Yeah, and so that is a carryover from the existing Grey's Lake Park Master Plan. And so we wanted to show what that Grey's Lake Master Plan shows today, and show it on this site so we could see everything in context, just like that Grey's Lake Park Master Plan envisioned, additional trails and some type of a wetland treatment area, you know, on that northern, or that southern boundary of the park. And so it wasn't something that we developed as a part of this plan, we were just showing it from that other plan. And I think it, the intent of that parking, if I remember back from the Grey's Lake Park Master Plan, was parking for the park. Thank you.
Please let me know if you can't hear. Welcome to the City Plan and Zoning Commission Meeting. I will review the Plan and Zoning Commission rules and procedures. The Plan and Zoning Commission is generally an advisory body to the City Council. The City Council will hold a public hearing and make the final decision on all matters before the commission, other than site plans and subdivision plaques, unless denials or conditional approvals thereof are appealed. Please contact the city clerk or Development Services Department staff for details on council hearings. Applicant will be given 10 minutes to present the request. Proponents and then opponents from the public are then allowed to speak in that order, with each speaker allowed a maximum of five minutes. Applicant is then allowed five minutes for a rebuttal. The hearing will then be closed, and the commission will discuss and vote on the issue. All comments are to be germane to the item under consideration, and speakers are to maintain a courteous manner. Items listed on the consent portion of the agenda will not be individually discussed and will be considered for approval in accordance with the recommendation in the staff report, unless an individual present or a member of the commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately under the public hearing agenda. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from the December 2nd meeting? Okay. And all those in favor, raise your right hand. And we have Greg and Francis on via the phone. And how do you vote?
Yeah.
Fred, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll read through the consent public hearing items. Item number one is a city-initiated request to amend the Plan DSM, creating our tomorrow plan, to adopt the South of Grey's Lake Master Plan as an element. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to have this item pulled from the consent Okay, then that will move to public. Item number two is a request from Drake University. Item number two is a request from Drake University for review and approval of the following for property located in the vicinity of 1, 2, 3, 6, 24th Street. A, determination as to whether requested amendment to the University Square Legacy PUD and rezoning are in conformance with Plan DSM. B, amend the University Square Legacy PUD to remove approximately .56 acres to be rezoned to MX-2 Mixed Use District. And C, rezon property from University Square Legacy PUD to MX-2 Mixed Use District to allow development of a mixed-use project, including residential and commercial uses. Is there anyone here who wishes to have this item pulled from the consent? Anyone on the Commission? Okay, item two remains on the consent agenda. Item three is a city-initiated request for vacation of a remaining east-to-west alley segment to the west of Sixth Avenue and the block between Walnut Street and Mulberry Street. The adjoining properties are 218 Sixth Avenue to the north, 606 Walnut Street to the west, and 206 Sixth Avenue to the south. Is anyone in the public wish to have this item pulled from the consent agenda? Anyone on the Commission? Okay, item three remains on consent. Item number four is a request from Iglesia Pentecostal del Nombre de Jesús for review and approval of a public hearing site plan, Iglesia Pentecostal parking lot improvements for property at 1625 Eighth Street, and for a Type 2 design alternative to waive the requirement to underground existing overhead utility lines. Is there anyone here who wishes to have this pulled from consent? Anyone on the Commission? Okay, item number three remains on consent, or item number four, excuse me. So now we have item two, three, and four. So all of those on the Commission who favor approving the consent agenda, please raise your right hand.
Well, I'll move consent.
Oh, I'm sorry, we have to, sorry. Yes. Jan will move it, and now we will vote. Please raise your right hand. And Greg and Francis, how do you vote?
Yeah.
Madam Chair, this is Greg. I need to abstain on item two, and I vote yes for items three and four.
Okay. Thank you, Greg. Okay, now we will open up our public hearing items and start with number one.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the Commission, Bert Droste, planning staff for the City of Des Moines. Item number one is the action item that is tied to the presentation that you heard at the 5:30 session. Again, that presentation was on the proposed South of Grayslake Master Plan. The action item that the Commission is charged with is to amending the Plan DSM Comprehensive Land Use Plan to adopt that master plan as an element. So currently, the Plan DSM land use map designates that whole area as downtown mixed use. So this plan really defines what is possible with that area, and as you saw in that master plan, it proposes a mix of downtown, or a mix of uses, and we, as staff, recommend that the Commission find the master plan that was presented to be compatible with the Plan DSM. So we have recommended approval of the adoption of the Plan DSM as an element, I'm sorry, adoption of the South of Grayslake Master Plan as an element of Plan DSM. Any questions for me?
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak in support of this item? Please come forward, state your name and address, and sign in.
Hi, my name is Carol Maher. I live in Ward 3, zip code 50312. Sorry, I'm double masked, and I'm not comfortable taking them off, so I'm going to eat the microphone here. Thank you to all the city staff, residents, electeds, Commissioner Alcevar, who participated in this project. It's pretty amazing. And Abby and Chris, really great presentation and beautiful document that I read with the agenda tonight. It seems odd that no one from the planning department was on the team, but that's just an observation. Maybe next time. And as Commissioner Page mentioned during the early session, I think this is an opportunity on that corner to be really bold with a really sexy, architecturally significant building that when you're flying over Fluor and you hit that building, I think it's an opportunity to really make a statement. So I thought maybe Jeannie Gang out of Chicago, who does great buildings, would be a great architect to talk to. But I think it's an opportunity to really make a splash and really say something about that neighborhood. There's also an awful lot of parking in the plan, which seems a little horrifying to me, especially as you called out the 326 spots for the park when that lot, whenever I ride by it, is empty. So hopefully, that will not come to be. And the parking that's associated with the housing just seems really overdone, and I don't think there's enough landscape island showing in the rendering. But I think this is also an opportunity to be bold on electrification, and it would be awesome if we drew a line and said, this is going to be an electric village, and everything here is electrified and no gas, and really position it as sort of the future of how we're going to live, if we plan on saving the planet. So it would be awesome if we came out, and again, were bold on building requirements and sustainability, which is kind of mentioned towards the end of the document, but I don't think is a big enough piece. And another thing that's sort of mentioned as an aside is the housing type, in that there's a, I forget the word you used, but I think scattered site, low to moderate income, affordable housing is really important, and accommodating residents of all income levels should strongly be considered and required, to the point that developers should be required to have a certain percentage of their housing be quote-unquote "affordable," up to like 30%. It can be done, and I think, again, we should be bold and think that way going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in support of this item? Is there anyone present who wishes to speak in opposition to this item? Okay. If not, we, any other questions for staff at this time? Okay. We will now close the public hearing, and Commissioners, it's up for your discussion.
I'll move staff.
Okay, is, any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, raise your right hand. And then Francis and Greg, how do you vote?
Francis votes yes.
Okay.
Greg votes yes.
Thank you very much. The motion passes, and we are now ready for item number five.
All right, Madam Chair, members of the Commission, Bert Droste, planning staff for the City of Des Moines again. Item number five is a city-initiated rezoning for about 18 parcels that are scattered throughout the southeastern part of the city, kind of to the north of Van Dalia Road, between southeast 30th Street and the eastern city limits. So this map here gives you a better idea of where these parcels are. If you will follow my mouse, this is Van Dalia Road, as you move east to the city limits, and the city limits are right where my mouse has went up and down. To give you a point of reference, the Southeast Connector, which is actually also known as East Martin Luther King Jr. Parkway, that has currently been constructed up to southeast 30th Street, and the city's in the process of securing the funds needed to continue it all the way from southeast 30th Street. If you follow my mouse along this line here, and it would connect to the eastern bypass, which is Highway 65, 69 in Pleasant Hill. So you can see from these yellow boundaries what's being considered for rezoning right now. Some of the parcels are in close proximity to the proposed, or to the future, I think it's safe to call it "future" instead of proposed, Southeast Connector roadway. I'm just going to go through a series of maps right now. This map here is the Comprehensive Land Use Plan that shows the land use designations overlaid with the aerial photo. So the darker blue areas are the industrials, and the lighter blue is the business park. All of these industrials here have been, the comp plan's been amended over time individually for each of these as part of rezonings that have been done. Like, most recently, we had the PDM rezoning at this location here. About a year and a half ago, we had another rezoning here on behalf of PDM, and then we had Helena Chemicals, and then some warehouse developments here to the south that have needed the industrial zoning. So again, here's, I'm going to show you four more maps. This is just the aerial photo of the area. Then this is the zoning that was in place back in, prior to 2019, when the city adopted the new zoning map. So you can see, I wish I had a way to overlay the boundaries, but the areas that are being rezoned here, so you can see this large area over here was zoned M2, heavy industrial, and then the larger areas along the west side were also zoned M2. And then there were some smaller parcels here in the middle, they were actually zoned M1, light industrial prior. So this next map, again, is Plan DSM, is the land use plan, and when the city adopted the new zoning map in 2019, state law required us to follow Plan DSM when assigning zoning districts to all of the parcels. And since Plan DSM designated these, this area, the significant area here, as business park, the city had to assign the EX district to these, which is more of a business park district than industrial district. So I don't know if many of you remember the AgroMergent Business Park Plan that was done about 15, 20 years ago by the city. At that time, the city envisioned this becoming a business park with, you know, the office, light industrial-type uses, and that's really why this area was designated as a business park, was really to promote that, or to carry out the vision of the AgroMergent Business Park Master Plan. And that was also knowing that the Southeast Connector was going to be passing through this area, and so this area's going to be highly visible, and it's also going to be a gateway to the city for vehicles coming off of the bypass to the east, passing through a little bit of Pleasant Hill, and then entering our city. So since it is one of the first areas that people are going to see, the city did have the vision of having it be more of a business park environment than a industrial area. And so, again, when the city adopted the new zoning map, we had to follow the Plan DSM land use designation. So you can see how, on this map here, this is the current zoning. So you can see that the EX district generally follows the business park designation. So now, these next several slides are just the staff recommendation. In it, if you read it, you'll see that we are fine with the majority of the parcels being rezoned to a heavy industrial, but we are recommending that five of the 18 remain zoned EX district. This map here, at the end of the staff recommendation, is really the best representation of our staff report. Again, this blue line here represents the future Southeast Connector roadway, and then these areas shaded in purple are the parcels that staff recommends remain, remain zoned as EX. And then what's left in yellow, staff is supportive of all of those being rezoned to an I2 heavy, or, yeah, to I2 heavy industrial district. Our recommendation had to follow parcel boundaries, because when the ordinances are drafted for the rezonings, we need a legal description of the properties that are being rezoned, and it's a lot simpler to have the legal description follow existing parcel boundaries rather than try to subdivide or split zone some of these parcels. So for those reasons, we've recommended that these parcels be, remain as EX. We also feel that they're deep enough that a nice, or that a development can be built to kind of buffer the heavier industrial uses from visibility for motors on the Southeast And I would also mention that if the properties, that, actually, all of these properties right now, the uses are considered legal nonconforming. Even if they were zoned I2 heavy industrial district, they would still be considered legal nonconforming, since our new ordinances that took effect in 2019 have quite a few site plan requirements for salvage yards and for other heavy industrial uses. So everything that's there today is really considered legal nonconforming, and as legal nonconforming uses, they're allowed to remain as they are in perpetuity. There's really, they wouldn't be able to expand or to make improvements that are equal in value to 50% or more of the property value, but they would be able to continue operating as they are today. And then here's the consent map. We had a couple cards come back in support. The one card in opposition is in this area right here, if you see where the mouse is. And then we had two cards come back in support. All right, and that concludes my presentation. Are there any questions for me?
I have a question. Bert, you mentioned that this was a city-initiated request?
Yes, it was.
Are the owners of these properties part of the process as well?
I believe they had talked to our Neighborhood Services Department, and so it was the Neighborhood Services Department who initiated the rezoning.
Okay, if there are no more questions, thank you, Bert. And now, are there any members in the audience who wish to speak in support of this request? Anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in opposition to the city request? Please come forward, state your name and address, and sign in, and you have five minutes to speak.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My name's Lou Hockenberg, 6601 West Harn Parkway. I'm here representing the two property owners that are affected by this, Sam's Riverside Auto Parts, Inc., and Al Viv Properties, LLC. The principals of those companies are also here tonight, Alan Devant, Eric Galinsky, Andrew Galinsky, and Gary Galinsky. You can see from the staff report that which entities own which properties in question. All these properties, 18 of them, were purchased over time for the industrial uses and the values that industrial use provides, and a premium was paid for those properties due to these features. The 18 properties have a conservative aggregate value of between $20 and $30 million. My clients pay together about $125,000 a year, excuse me, in property taxes for the 18 properties, and they employ 50 or more employees in the area. My clients originally operated their businesses in the Central Place area in Des Moines, but were relocated by the City of Des Moines to the southeast area. Since then, they have operated their businesses under the city rules and regulations. They've been good corporate citizens of Des Moines and added substantially to the economy. In 2019 and 2020, the zoning of these properties was changed, originally M1 and M2. This was unilaterally done by the This was unilaterally done by the city. Now they have an EX zoning mixed-use district classification, even though that zoning doesn't really match the use. The owners were not given any meaningful notice when the zoning was changed several years back. Now, we appreciate that the city recognizes the unfairness of that rezoning and recommends the rezoning of 13 of the 18 properties to an I2 zoning classification. At some time, at the same time, the staff recommends retaining the EX business park zoning for five properties. We oppose that for various reasons. Firstly, the properties at 141938 and 1502 Southeast 42nd are part of the property at 3900 Vandelia Road, Sam's Riverside Auto Parts. Even though they're separate parcels, they are part of one unit. And 3900 Vandelia will presumably be rezoned I2. There's no justification for a different zoning and different permitted uses for basically the same operation, for the same business, and that would be the effect of this proposal. Number two, 1511 Southeast 42nd Street and 800 Southeast 32nd have been used as salvage yard by Al Viv and its predecessors for many years. They were purchased as a salvage yard and were licensed as such, and a premium was paid for this particular use. Number three, under the proposed rezoning, these five properties will be classified as legal nonconforming uses. What you weren't told was, even though the uses may be somewhat expanded within rules and regulations, if there were damage or destruction to these properties, presumably they couldn't do any, they couldn't reestablish the businesses without the Board of Adjustment approval. And restrictions could be placed, and of course, a conditional use permit would have to be obtained, but they would not have the right to go in there the next day and reopen their businesses. They would be basically operating at the mercy of the planning, or the Board of Adjustment. Next, by not rezoning these five properties consistent with their prior and present uses, the owners will be losing hundreds of thousands, if not millions, of dollars in value. Industrial properties, especially where outdoor storage is allowed, and it is in this case, is valued and sells for substantially more than the mixed-use business property, business park properties. At the same time, the city is attempting to buy these parcels, buy several parcels out of these five properties currently at this time. The same time they're attempting to do that, they're downzoning the property, the zoning, and the value shrinks. So on one hand, we're losing our zoning; on the other hand, we're losing a lot of value as a result of that. There's nothing fair about that. We object, as you can tell, from the proposed rezoning of these five parcels, but if there are alternatives to straight-out rezoning these properties, if some kind of alternative could be reached, we're open to that, but the city's not approached us. If there are some news, some uses that are particularly obnoxious to the city that we can live with, we'd be willing to talk about that. But just to straight-out tell us that this is going to be a commercial mixed-use property, even though the zoning is different than that, and even though we're losing hundreds of thousands and maybe millions of dollars of value, there's got to be a better way to handle this. We're open to that, but the proposal, obviously, we were opposed to for the reasons I stated. I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions?
So just to clarify, right now, the properties are zoned EX.
They are today, all 18 of them.
So you're opposed to going to the I2?
We're in support of the 13, for the 13 properties.
You want all of them to go to the I2?
Yes.
18 properties?
Yes. They should all be consistently zoned, they're all used together. Yes, that's correct. And again, if there are some alternatives to totally retaining the zoning on these five, we're willing to listen to it.
But retaining the zoning for the five are retaining EX?
Beg your pardon?
Right now, they're currently zoned EX.
Yes.
So retaining that zoning would be retaining the EX for the five?
That's right. We're opposed to that.
Right.
For the reasons I stated, but the other 13, we're in support of that.
And as previously stated by the city staff, even right now, under the EX, you're still nonconforming use.
That's correct.
So any damage or anything else that triggers a site plan will have to bring all of the, well, the properties that we're discussing today in compliance with today's codes.
Yes, however, under, under the current zoning right now, salvage yards are prohibited in the EX zone.
Any other questions from the commission?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak in support, or in support or opposition now, I guess? If you do, come forward, you have five minutes. Okay, does anyone else in opposition wish to come forward and speak? Okay, state your name and address, and please sign in, and you have five minutes.
Andrew Galinsky, 720 Southeast Hawthorne Ridge Drive, Waukees. I just wanted to clarify one thing. You had a question to Lou about what he was saying on the five parcels. We would be open to, if we would gain back our original industrial zoning, that we would make concessions. If there's certain things the city doesn't want on those five parcels, we would be open to agreeing to that. That's, I just wanted to clear that up, so, okay, thank you.
Anyone else who wish to speak in opposition to the request? Okay, if not, commissioners, do you have any other questions or staff? Emily?
I have a question for Bert, thank you. Did you consider moving all of these to I2? And I know it says in the report, given the proximity to the future connector roadway, is there, are there more reasons, or can you speak to that a little bit more?
Well, we notified it as, as though all 18 were going to be rezoned to I2 district, and the reason for notifying it is the most broad district is it's, the commission's always able to recommend something less intense, but you couldn't go more intense. So it would be within the commission's purview if you wanted to suggest I1 district, which is the lighter industrial district for any of these properties, or you could also recommend I2. As they've mentioned, that zoning conditions would be an option, but in order for the city to put in, or put zoning conditions on a property, the title, all title holders of the property have to sign what's called a letter of zoning acceptance, saying that they agree to those conditions. So if the applicant would propose, or, not the applicant, if the Galinskys and Givants would propose some conditions that the commission feels would be appropriate, and that the, they would be willing to sign a letter of zoning acceptance saying that they agree to, that would be an option. I know they said that staff didn't reach out to them to propose any, in all honesty, we knew that one of the things that we would recommend be prohibited would be the salvage yards' uses, just because they are right along the Southeast Connector. So we knew right off the hand that they wouldn't agree with that, because that's what they, their current business is there.
Could you point out on the map exactly where the five?
Yeah.
Parcels are?
Yeah, so the one parcel is up here at the northwest, and to get to it, you come off of Southeast 30th Street, Moray Street. Then the other four are right here. The black lines are the parcel lines, so here's one, there's two here, and then the last one here is to the right. And what they were saying was that, if you see where my mouse is here, everything to the west right now all operates as a single business. So they're saying what staff's recommended would create a split zoning situation where half of their use would be zoned I2, and the other half would be zoned EX. So that's one of the reasons they're not in support of that. And then over here on the right, to the right of this line, this is really, I believe it's undeveloped right now, but it's all owned in common, so it could be sold or developed as a single use, but if it's zoned split, then that would possibly create a challenge in redeveloping it.
Chair?
So, my question is, they suggested some alternatives, and they're willing to work. What would be some alternatives?
Well, I hinted at that, like, one of the zoning conditions that they could propose is to limit use, specific uses. I'm guessing they wouldn't be willing to prohibit salvage yards, but they might be willing to prohibit, like, slaughterhouse, or a rendering plant, or some other noxious facility.
What would be available, what would be the main differences between I1 and I2?
The I1 is the, we call it a light industrial district, and I2 is heavy industrial. So I1 allows for more warehousing and, like, transportation, like, truck terminals, auto body repair, things like that. Then I2 is the city's most restrictive, or most, or should say the least restrictive district. It allows pretty much anything, it just anything, but...
From what we've heard from the property owners, that they're willing to work with staff on some of the, the uses that may be restricted, as well as the current use, which is a salvage yard, I would be in favor of continuing this item, especially since it was city-initiated. I don't think there's anything in the works or any specific project that we need to move this forward tonight. So that's just my, my two cents.
I would agree, so I think you should make a motion.
Okay, well, then, if there are no other comments, I will move to continue this item so that the staff and property owners can continue to work on some sort of agreement that works out for the city as well as the owners of the properties.
Yes, that's what I was going to ask for. If you would continue it to a specific date, so we have some direction, I was wanting to comment.
I would need some, January 20th, is that a good timeline to, for staff and the property owners? Okay, so January 20th.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor, any other discussion? If not, please raise your right hand if you agree with motion. And Greg and Francis, how do you vote?
Francis votes yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes for Greg.
Okay, thank you, the motion passes. Okay, we are now ready for, thank you, item number six. And Jillian is going to present.
Good evening, Jillian Summer with City Planning Staff. Item number six is in regards to property at 11163rd Street for review of a public hearing site plan. They are requesting two type-two design alternatives. The first is for waiver of the requirement to underground the existing overhead electric, sorry, overhead utilities. And the second type-two design alternative request is to waive the requirement to provide sidewalk. The reason for the site plan is that the property is changing use. It was most previously a nail salon, and it's changing to a liquor store. The property is located on the east side of 63rd Street, just to the south of Grand Avenue. I'm going to start with the sidewalk. I know we wrote that opposite in our staff report, but I'll start with the sidewalk, just because you can see it on the aerial here. Along 63rd Street, 63rd Street is designated as a priority-two street, and so the sidewalk is eligible for a type-one design alternative. However, staff was not supportive of allowing that to be waived. Along 63rd Street, there are five properties between 63rd Street and, and properties to the south that don't have sidewalk, this being one of them. The city recently did a pump station project to the north and installed a good chunk of sidewalk along here to the north. And to the south, we also have another site plan in process where the applicant would be proposing sidewalk as well. So one of the five would already be installing sidewalks, so then there'd only be four remaining properties here without sidewalk. Due to that character of the surrounding area and the fact that the sidewalk would provide pedestrian, safe pedestrian access along this corridor, and this would be the missing link, staff is not supportive of waiving that requirement to provide sidewalk. The second design alternative that's requested is to waive the existing underground utilities. You can see in the site plan here, the existing underground, or existing overhead utilities, excuse me, there's lines that run along 63rd Street, and then there are also lines that run into the property with service lines coming to the building at 11163, as well as to the building to the south. These pictures show the lines along 63rd Street. Those are transmission lines, and Mid-American has indicated that those are not lines that are feasibly undergrounded. The lines that go into the site, you can kind of see them here, they extend into a pole and to another pole, there's a bunch of transformers here, and lines that serve the building as well as the building to the south. The overall project value for this project is $11,000. The cost to underground the service lines into the building, the applicant has obtained an estimate that the cost would be $12,000, which would represent 109% of the total project cost. And due to that, staff is recommending approval of the request to waive undergrounding of the existing overhead utilities. So just to recap, staff is recommending denial of the request to waive the sidewalk and approval of the request to waive the existing overhead utilities.
Any questions from the commission?
Yes, I have a question. Can you show us on the map where the sidewalk would go?
Yeah. I don't know that I have a larger context map other than this one, but it is feasible that it would be able to be located in the right-of-way, I believe. The right-of-way is quite large here, so there, there should be sufficient room to put it in the right-of-way and work around the poles that are there.
Emily?
I'd like to follow up on that. Where is, you said, I believe that there's another proposed sidewalk to the south. Where would that be, please?
It's the, the property directly off this map that's not seen, that's the U-Haul, and directly south of the U-Haul is where the existing sidewalk begins. Okay, so if I can orient you here, this is the subject property, 11163. This is the U-Haul property to the south. They would be putting in sidewalk with their project, and the existing sidewalk starts right to the south of theirs, and then it continues on down.
And that's already been agreed upon?
U-Haul is, yes, they are, have that on their site plan currently. The site plan is not approved, but it is in process and shown.
Thank you.
And then the sidewalk to the north, again, here's the subject property. This is a strip center, and the existing sidewalk starts here to the north and extends all the way up to Grand Avenue. It may be possible that the U-Haul would come before the commission.
Emily?
So the whole, the whole project is $11,000. Do you know how much the sidewalk costs?
I don't have that information. We'd have to seek that out.
Any other questions?
One final question, Jillian. You mentioned there were five properties that needed sidewalk?
Mm-hmm.
So if these were to be approved tonight, as far as, like, not the waiver, but the sidewalk going in, and the U-Haul, we have three properties left.
That's correct. That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Which would never come in front of us, unless they do some improvements in their property, correct?
They would have to have a trigger for a site plan, unless the city were to fill the gap.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Okay. If not, we're ready for the applicant to present. And you have 10 minutes. Please come forward, state your name and address, and then you can sign on on the sheet.
Madam Chair, council members, my name is Jim Host. I'm a landscape architect with Confluence. We're representing the owners, Punjab Inc. So the, the overhead issue, I think, is agreed to, and we're happy with that. We're not opposed to putting in the sidewalk. The owner would just like, you know, this has been a long time, this process, since he got his conditional use approval for a new use, and he's been waiting to make some interior improvements to get his thing going. So he would like to get his business up and making some money before he was required to, that's about 1,200 feet aside, or 1,200 square feet of sidewalk, which is going to be $6,000 to $8,000 to put in, probably. So he would just like, he's not opposed to that, but maybe when the U-Haul starts theirs, if that's a little bit down the road, then he could put that on the schedule later on, but, you know, just not be required to do it right now as part of the process, so. I don't know if you want to say anything else, Sonny, but I think that's kind of our position right now.
Okay, do you have any questions, Commissioner? Okay, thank you very much. Is there anyone else present who wishes to speak in support? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition? Carol?
I am, Carol Maher Ward III. I am against waiving the sidewalk requirement, as someone personally has ridden my bike to those retailers along 63rd, coming off the trail. You kind of have to go cross-country to get from one to the other when the sidewalk is missing. So it is important, and it is important to fill in those gaps, so I would strongly recommend that you require the sidewalk to be installed. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Anybody else who wishes to speak? Okay. Any additional questions for city staff? Johnny?
One question for staff. With the site plan requirements, how long is usually the period for compliance with, is it two years, I believe? Two years? Okay, thank you. So they wouldn't have to put the sidewalk in right now, but within the two years, they would?
The site plan would be valid for two years, but in order to obtain a certificate of occupancy, or a certificate of zoning compliance, the sidewalk would need to be installed and completed, or the site plan completed, I should say.
And before that, they could still obtain a temporary certificate of occupancy, right? So they can run the business before, they can open up before everything is completed, correct?
Yes, usually, usually a temporary certificate of occupancy is for things that are beyond their control, though. So, for example, you usually don't install landscaping in the winter, so a temp CO would allow landscaping to be installed in the spring. Usually, it's not related to sidewalk.
And I have, I have a question. Tell me again, tell us again the timing of the U-Haul sidewalk. I mean, is that a for-sure thing, and?
Exactly. The site plan has not been approved yet, so, and permits have not been obtained for that project, so.
So you can't really tie them together, in a sense?
It's, yeah, it's under review at the moment, but it could, you never know.
Is there a way that we can require the sidewalk, but not right at this moment, so that they can still, like, so we can kind of compromise here?
In other situations, we have allowed a timeframe for the sidewalk to be installed, so if there was a timeframe that you wanted to propose, that certainly could be a condition.
I'd be open to something like one or two years? Two years?
And just to clarify, if the other three properties submitted a site plan, and they complied with everything, including sidewalk, we wouldn't even see that ourselves, right?
That's correct.
Thank you.
If we were, if we were to go through this route with the, with the two years, or whatever, what is, if there is, an enforcement mechanism by the city?
Our site plan would be approved conditional on the sidewalk being installed within that timeframe, and so if they didn't do that or follow through, we would have the ability to create a code enforcement case, saying that they did not complete their site plan conditions.
Any other comments, or does anyone wish to make a motion? Okay.
I'll move. I'll move that, I'll move staff with the idea that, well, no, that's not true. No, I'll move staff with a two-year time limit for the sidewalk. Does that make sense?
Any other discussion? If not, everyone in favor of the motion on the floor, raise your right hand. And Greg and Francis, how do you vote?
Francis votes yes.
Thank you.
Greg votes, Greg votes no.
Okay, thank you. The motion passes. And we are now ready for the final agenda item, number seven, and Jillian's presenting again.
Madam Chair, this is Greg. I need to recuse myself for the second.
Okay, thank you.
Item number seven is in regards to a property at 1910 Ingersoll Avenue for review of a public hearing site plan. There's two type-two design alternatives that the applicant has requested. Part A is to reduce the minimum overall height requirement for a storefront building from three stories to two stories, and part B is to waive the requirement to underground the existing overhead utilities. The property is located on the south side of Ingersoll, just to the east of Martin Luther King Jr. Parkway. It's an existing building that they are proposing to add a addition, a second-story addition, that's basically the same footprint as the, as the first floor. Due to the size of the addition, and to comply with the enlargement and expansion requirements, they are required to fully comply with the building type regulations of the storefront building, as well as full-site compliance. The storefront building does require a three-story building, so existing building is one story. Three stories is required. They're proposing two. They've done analysis on the, on the foundations, and the feasibility of adding a third story, and it would be quite costly to get another story there, so the applicant is only proposing two stories, which staff is supportive of. Just to give you an idea of what it looks like on the front, this is the building elevation, so the street-facing facade is this elevation. These are the sides. A mural would be proposed on the east, and then the rear. The use of the building is for the Community Foundation of Greater Des Moines, which is an office space. And they, they would be upgrading the site to provide increased landscaping within the parking lot to the, to the east, as well as the Ingersoll streetscape along the north. The second request is in regards to the existing overhead utilities, and there are two kind of sets of lines on this one, similar to the last one. There's overhead lines that run east-west along Ingersoll Avenue, and then there are lines that run north-south, kind of down the driveway, that connect to the property to the south. This is a picture of the, of the lines along Ingersoll Avenue, running east-west. And then you can kind of see more detail here of the lines that run north-south down the driveway, connecting to the property to the south. The overall project value for this project is $3,090,000. And there's, there's a few different pieces of this, of the cost, so we tried to put it into a table, just so it's more easily digestible. There's costs associated with Mid-American portions of the work, and there's private costs for a private electrician to perform pieces, in order for the buildings to be able to receive underground utilities. Mid-American has indicated that along Ingersoll Avenue, there's approximately $40,000 of work directly associated with the lines that front this property. However, there would be about additional $60,000 worth of work in the general area, just to make it work with, with guy wires, and making the actual feasibility of, of the work to underground those lines along Ingersoll. Private costs for that portion of the work would be $44,732, and again, that would be in order for the building to be able to receive underground utilities. For the north-south lines, the Mid-American cost for their portion of the work would be, again, around $40,000, and the private cost would be $207,000. This would include transformers, it would also include Lincoln Savings Bank being able to, the property to the east, being able to receive lines underground, as well as the Pink Vine Mansion, which is the property to the south. If all of the lines were required to be underground, the total cost would be $331,934, which would total 10.7% of the overall budget. Due to the total cost, as well as the coordination that would be needed with the neighboring properties, staff does not believe that it is reasonably practical to require undergrounding of those north-south lines. However, and we do think it would be reasonably practical to prioritize undergrounding the lines along Ingersoll Avenue. There is a proposed Ingersoll Avenue streetscape that, there's no timeline set on it, but it is expected that the Ingersoll streetscape would extend along this area in the future. So staff would be recommending that the applicant provide an escrow of $84,732, that the city would utilize when they implemented that Ingersoll streetscape, in order to underground the lines with that streetscape. We didn't think, we thought it was appropriate to assign just the $40,000, not the $60,000 additional, just because the $40,000 is most directly related with this property, whereas the $60,000 is really the broader project. So that $84,000 represents $40,000 for the Mid-American cost, as well as $44,732 of the private cost. So to recap, staff is recommending approval of the type-two design alternative to allow a storefront building being reduced from three to two stories, and staff is recommending approval of the request to waive the underground requirement, subject to the applicant providing an escrow agreement for $84,732.
Any questions?
I have a question. We keep throwing this escrow program around, do we really have anything in place? Do we have any structure to this, or have we even used it?
We do have...
Implemented it, excuse me.
We, we do have escrow agreements that we have used. I think when, the, the reason for the escrow is when there is actually a proposed project that feasibly could happen in the future, that the city could actually use the escrow within the timeframe of the escrow. So the typical timeframe for the escrow would be 10 years.
Is this a little, oh, sorry.
Has, has staff discussed this revision with the applicant?
I don't believe we've had direct conversation with them, no.
So we've seen...
I will, I should add to that. The private estimates that are noted here in the staff report were just received today, and so the revised staff report was, was developed today, and so we haven't had, just haven't had time.
The escrow, what we've seen in the past, I, I think, and maybe I'm wrong, has been the whole thing put in escrow, but this is only 2%. Is that normal? Like, what, what's the reasoning, and tell me if I'm wrong?
Are you asking why we didn't ask for the additional $60,000, or for the north-south lines as well?
Why are we just asking for 2% as opposed to the whole thing? I feel like in the past, we've done...
The, yeah, the $84,000 represents 2.6% of the total addition and expansion cost, but it would represent 100% of the cost for undergrounding the lines on Ingersoll.
Oh, okay, okay, okay. That makes more sense, thanks.
Any other questions for Jillian?
I have two questions, Jillian. One, the Lincoln Savings Bank, that's a fairly new project next door. Did they underground their utilities?
They, we recommended the same exact scenario for them. That came before the Plan and Zoning Commission, and the approval was for them to write an escrow agreement as well. They ended up asking for a letter of credit instead of an escrow, which is another similar mechanism, and that was approved. They have a letter of credit, or they're supposed to have a letter of credit for $62,000.
Thank you. And then the other question that I had was, it looks like the prior staff recommendation was even less than what's requested now. So is it safe to say that the applicant was opposed to that prior number, which looks to be $40,000?
Yes, I believe that's correct.
Thank you.
Just to clarify, Johnny, the staff recommendation that was issued on Friday actually would have cost them $80,000, because we were saying the $40,000 escrow, plus spending the $40,000 to bury the north-south line. So it would have still had a net cost to them of $80,000, which was still about 2% of their $3 million project.
Any other questions of staff? If not, we'll hear from the applicant. Please come forward, state your name and address, and you have 10 minutes.
Good evening, I'm Carla Jones Weber, I'm with the Community Foundation of Greater Des Moines. We are a nonprofit organization that's served Des Moines for over 50 years, working hard to improve the quality of life here in our community. We are invested in our community. We believe in being good corporate citizens. As a nonprofit organization, we have continually made annual voluntary pilot contributions to support our public services, have supported the betterment of many neighborhoods in our, in Des Moines, and this neighborhood specifically through providing a leadership grant to begin the Restoration Ingersoll Project back in 2006. We administer charitable funds, and we serve our nonprofit community in a variety of ways. We act as a convener, bring community members to the table to have difficult conversations, and look to address challenges... and look to address challenges and promising opportunities in our community. We are excited to have this building to be our C3 Center, which will serve our nonprofit community here in Greater Des Moines. We will hold trainings, community convenings, and those types of activities within the building. As I mentioned, we are a nonprofit organization. We have worked hard to fundraise to facilitate this project, and are excited about moving forward. And next, I'm going to hand it over to Dan with Slingshot.
Okay. Thank you.
Oh. Yeah? Perfect. All right. Dan Rendell, Slingshot Architecture. We're at 305 East Court Avenue. I, my portion is a little brief tonight, but just wanted to speak to the height of the building and the first type-two request. Looks like we're getting close. It's flashing blue now. So, what we added, now we got a light? One more, one more step. So, what I want to speak to tonight is mainly just the other projects on the street. The streetscape of Ingersoll is essentially, a lot of the new buildings have, have been installed at about two stories, and we've been monitoring height and making sure that it, that those buildings are of a stature that hits around 30 feet. And so, we just wanted to bring that comparison for clarity. There we go. Centered up in the screen. And so, Lincoln Savings Bank is about 64 feet away. And so, we put the two buildings next to each other, just for, for graphic representation in support of the staff recommendation to approve the type-two alternative for height. So, we're sitting at about 32 feet on our taller parapet and 30 feet on our lower parapet. So, hopefully, you agree that we're meeting kind of the intent of what's been improved on other projects on Ingersoll. And if you don't have any questions for me, I'll turn it over to the team talking about undergrounding.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a quick question. Especially for this, the side where you're adding the rooftop mechanicals, have you considered potentially raising up that parapet, just to provide that, the block, blocking that view, instead of providing that screen?
Sure, sure. Design-wise, we wanted to kind of keep the step mats at the front. That screening is actually set back pretty significantly, kind of centered in the roof. So, in the longer views of our site, we're not going to see you mechanical, but our preference was not to raise up that parapet. We won't see that screen from the street. Great question, though. All right.
No other questions? Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Devin Moody with Confluence Landscape Architecture, 525 17th Street, Des Moines, Iowa. On behalf of the Community Foundation, we'd really like to come before you and ask for you to waive the undergrounding and accept the type-two variance for the power lines. Having the two different power line systems that are on the, on the site, feeding three different lots, three different properties, having that network, and also the magnitude of transformers that would be required for those power lines to be underground is significant based on space. As you can see, we're renovating the existing site. We're trying to maintain as much as the existing concrete and parking lot as possible. Having to underground those, finding a new place for the giant pads for the transformers, it takes up a quite considerable amount of the area for our, our project. Again, being a nonprofit, the entire project is funded by donations from the community. The building is also being provided for community and nonprofit organizations for use. So, we really do implore you all to consider the option for us to not have to underground those wires for that reason. With having the two systems split, having Ingersoll, the east-western lines, and then also having the north-south lines, having, for information from talking of Lincoln Savings Bank, they were, from what we were told, the escrow is only a three-year commitment for them. Is that correct? So, a three-year, so not the 10-year that we heard earlier. And it's contingent on the western property for them, so we are on the east of them. So, having to wait for an additional project to commence for that to actually take place, we're not exactly sure if that will happen. Also, putting in escrow of the private costs, $44,732 into the, an escrow account, kind of concerned us, as I manage money quite well. I'll be able to, if needed, to provide that later on. We don't see why that would need to go into an escrow account. I'm happy to answer any questions, if you have any.
Really? You mentioned Lincoln Savings, and I kind of do remember that we did the line of credit for them. Is that something you'd be open to? And it sounds like it could be the 10-year.
I have to... We can absolutely get a letter of credit, if that's the preference. We would prefer the three-year versus a 10-year, though.
Any other questions? Okay. Not, thank you very much. It's a beautiful building.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else present who wishes to speak in support of the application? If not, is there anyone here who wishes to speak in opposition? Okay, then, it's time for any questions for city staff. I guess I do have one, if, with Lincoln National Bank, if that was indeed three years or 10 years. Do you... Can you...
Sorry, I missed a question.
Okay. So, with Lincoln National Bank, was that for 10 years or three years?
I believe it was 10 years. It was the same concept. Jillian, do you know if that was... Okay, she's looking.
Okay, she's looking. Thank you. Any other questions for staff at this time? Okay. If not, we will close the public hearing and for commissioners' discussion. Johnny?
I was just going to sound the drum of the precedent. I don't know if we did three years or 10 years prior with the Lincoln Savings Bank, but I would be in support of going that way again.
I agree. I don't think we should deviate, though. So, whatever it was, that's what we should do.
Okay. And, and so, we're waiting for staff to check to see? I can't remember what minutes those would be.
Just to clarify, what was the period for the escrow that we're talking about? I didn't hear it, frankly.
The one we're recommending tonight is 10 years. But Jillian, looking up what was recommended for the Lincoln Savings Bank next door. She says 10 years.
Okay. 10 years. All right. So, anyone wish to make a motion at this time? And, and Greg has recused himself on this one, correct? Yeah?
I would recommend the revised staff.
Care to make a motion? Okay. The, the public hearing is closed, but if you have a comment, go ahead. If you come up to the podium.
Devin Moody, again, apologies. I thought we would have time to speak after the deliberation. One of my questions is also based on the, the previous agenda that was done. The escrow amount was only the $40,000, which was the mid-M amount. So, if there was a waiver with an escrow amount, we would request it be the $40,000 just for mid-M, and not the private amount as well.
So, the $44,732?
That's the private amount. So, we would request that it just be the mid-American cost of $3,000 in escrow.
Thank you.
I would take that as a friendly amendment.
Okay. So, would you restate? You did state a motion, then?
I recommend the staff recommendation with an $800,000 escrow for 10 years. I thought he wanted to take it down to the 80.
No, to the 44, just the private portion, which is the $44,000.
Yes. Thank you for the correction.
Could you say it one more time?
Okay. So, do you want to restate that? Or, go ahead.
I'm so sorry. Let me clarify. We're requesting if so be just the mid-American cost of $40,000. Go to escrow.
Bert, could you clarify what that means for the city? If it was just the one...
I'm sorry. I was just double clarifying. So, $40,000 letter of credit, not escrow, excuse me.
Okay. Jillian?
Then, the other $44,732, the city would be responsible for that cost at the time of the streetscape improvement and undergrounding at that time.
As a follow-up to that, for Lincoln Savings Bank, did we do both private cost and mid-American cost?
I believe the $62,000 represents both.
62. Okay. Thank you.
Can we approach one more?
Okay. Okay. Come forward one more time. Yeah.
I guess I would just say, you know, as a property owner who does improvements on properties, it seems strange that we would put amounts that we would pay a vendor to connect from the mid-American transformer to our own property in escrow, or even a line of credit, or a letter of credit, when that's a vendor that we would have to pay to connect our building. So, that's why we're saying the $40,000, which is the mid-American cost.
Okay. Now, there's a motion on the floor. So, do you want to restate, restate the motion? A little closer to your mic.
Yeah. So, the $40,000 for the mid-American cost, with a letter of credit for 10 years escrow to replace the number of $84,732 in staff recommendation, otherwise to approve staff recommendation as written in the revision.
And I think we need to remove the word escrow. I would say to city staff, it would just be a letter of credit and not use the word escrow.
All right. Thank you. Good. That clarifies that for me.
Okay. Thank you. Any other discussion of the motion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please raise your right hand. And Frances, how do you vote?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Motion passes. So, thank you. And this concludes our public portion. Do we have any director committee reports?
No. I was just going to mention that we are not meeting on the first Thursday in January, so the next meeting will be the third Thursday in January, which is January 20th. And then, the last item on that agenda will be the election of officers.
Great. Thank, thank you very much.
Yeah.
And meeting is adjourned.